With your friends and family. However you use Sunrail, it's truly a better way to go.
I'm definitely planning to use it every day.
It's gonna be a nice, stress-free ride to work.
It's nice, I like the tables.
Thirty-four trains arrive and depart daily from 12 stations. From DeBarry in Volusia County, down to Sand Lake Road in Orange County. Same-day tickets and reloadable SunCards are available at ticket vending machines on all station platforms, and online at sunrail.com. There are different types of passes for every traveler, including monthly passes and prepaid value cards with no expiration. Same-day round trip or one-way tickets are also available. Once your ticket is purchased, simply tap your ticket or SunCard on Sunrail's Tap On, Tap Off Ticket Validator, and you're ready to ride.
Yeah, I've already gotten my card.
So come aboard, and discover for yourself why Sunrail riders truly experience a better way to go.
And now, another BFF moment, from Best Foot Forward for Pedestrian Safety. When you are driving, are you watching out for pedestrians?
Just remember, we're watching. If you're not yielding to pedestrians in crosswalks, you're breaking the law. It could cost you $164 and up to 3 points on your license. It could cost them their life. Watch for pedestrians, and remember, we're watching too. Join the movement, and put your best foot forward for pedestrian safety. I yield for peds, do you? your interactive neighborhood training source. iLead is a series of guides, videos, webinars, and workshops created for our neighborhood leaders.
Good morning, I'd like to welcome you to the June 15th workshop of the Orlando City Council. Commissioners, at the State of the City address, we spoke about the importance of community policing and the role that it plays in keeping crime low. And crime is down 20% since 2007, and community policing also plays a critical role in creating the trust between our police officers and the public. Here in Orlando, as even Scott Maxwell reported over the weekend, our police are involved in youth programming like dragon boats, and basketball leagues, and partnerships with our residents such as Neighborhood Watch are being nationally recognized. But we have seen across the country that divides are forming between police and community, and respect and trust between our officers, not necessarily ours, but some officers and residents are certainly in jeopardy. And it's important that we take proactive measures to ensure that doesn't happen here, and that's why at the State of the City, I charged Byron to work with Chief Mina to ensure that our city maintains a world-class police force. And while this effort has been underway, last week we had an incident related to an arrest downtown, that if we don't handle it appropriately, it could jeopardize that community trust, and that's why we have immediately launched an investigation, and as we have done with other cases, we've also asked a third party, in this case FDLE, to also use their eyes, separate from our force, to assess the situation. And I know that some people would like to have a rush to judgment and have immediate answers, but it's very important that we respect the process and allow the investigation to be completed, and we're committed to doing this as quickly as possible, but also with maintaining the integrity of the system. And it's a serious matter whenever any of our police officers need to use force, and I certainly wish they never did, but that's not the case. But we do hold our police department and our officers to the highest professional standards. Our officers serve every day with compassion and courage. They risk their lives every single day for ours and for the safety of the public, and it's important that we respect and that we honor them, and it's just as important that we hold them accountable. And that's why it is important to ensure that our community remains protected by the best police force in the nation, the best officers, the best trained officers working with our residents to keep our community safe. And it's just, it's happenstance, sometimes timing works, that we had scheduled this particular workshop for today. So I'm gonna call Byron and the chief up to give us an update on our initiative and the progress that we've made to date. Byron?
Thank you Mayor, good morning. As you mentioned, we actually started working on this about a month ago, to give you all an update on the assessment and the charge Mayor Dyer gave us at the State of the City. It just happens to be very timely, and we believe there's some certainly very helpful informative information to share today. So today, the presentation is planned as follows. Starting off with the purpose of this assessment, it's a community policing assessment, and this is our progress report to give you a sense of where we are and the approach that we are taking. And as noted, this is one of the quotes from Mayor Dyer's State of the City remarks, he talked about community policing and about building the trust and competence with the public, and we wanted to ensure that indeed, all of our practices, our procedures, and the things that we do and our purpose allows.
Byron, your PowerPoint is not up.
Okay.
While they're getting the PowerPoint up, I'll remind everybody to put their devices on silent.
All right. Thank you Ed. As well as, there's a hard copy at your place as well.
There you go, you got it.
Okay, all right. So we start on the purpose of the assessment, Mayor Dyer's charge from State of the City, and he certainly spoke to the importance of building community trust and confidence with our officers. And so we embarked on this approach, and today we will cover and give you an idea of the, or at least a more comprehensive approach that we're taking. There are five approaches as part of this assessment, and I'll briefly touch on each of those and the activities associated with it. But today's focus will be on those activities that are unique to the Orlando Police Department, and Chief Mina will cover those in detail. We also are at a good point in terms of the national narrative concerning community policing. We have the benefit of the recent task, the Task Force Report that was recently released from the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and it noted its mission was to examine how to foster strong collaborative relationships between local law enforcement and the communities they protect. And clearly, we have an obligation, police, law enforcement agencies around the country have an obligation to ensure safe communities and want to be sure that we can promote effective crime reduction while building that public trust. The recommendations, they've had a national panel, many voices, part of that 21st Century Report, and it's given us a good barometer, another means to look at how we fare compared to a number of reports from around the country and their recommendations, and I will tell you upfront, we fare very well in terms of a lot of the policies, the practices, techniques that we have in place. You'll see that a number of the things that they reported on the 21st Century Policing Report are already in place in the city of Orlando. But beyond the 21st Century Report and the national comparisons, we know there are community expectations, and so our work in this assessment certainly reflects the community expectations of our organization and of Orlando Police Department, and actually, we put a lot of emphasis on accountability as part of this process. So just to briefly touch on the assessment, that at a later date, we'll give you a more in-depth report, but again, today it's just to give you a sense of what the assessment entails. There are five areas, as I mentioned, the focus areas. One is review of the policies on use of force, and the, and also related policies like racial profiling, et cetera. And through this, we simply want to ensure that we have thorough policies that reflect the best practices and our community expectations. There's personnel development under that approach, we're looking at hiring, since oftentimes there's a question about who are the officers, where they come from, what's their criteria, and the training, which is Chief Mina will go into great detail on the training activities and programs and how they are trained on enhanced transparency. This is certainly an important part about public accountability, what means we have in place to provide access to information, that folks know what will happen, when it will happen, how it will happen, and how to engage with us. On the community engagement component, talk about trust. Trust is built on relationships, and so we're gonna talk about what activities Orlando Police Department has underway to build community relationships, as well as from a citywide perspective, what those activities entail. And then the last part is on economic development. We added that as part because a lot of that narrative around the country talked about opportunity, or lack of opportunity, and what factor it may play into some of the, the way the relationships are between law enforcement and its citizens, and we believe that here in the city of Orlando, there are a number of activities that are underway, and we want to be able to touch base on those as well to show a holistic approach. Again, on the policy review, I mentioned the first one, I'll just say each activity has a, its own section, a person responsible, it's assigned, we have a start date and a finish date, and when we come back a little later this year, we'll be in a position to actually give a report out on each one of these. As I mentioned, Chief will cover most of these activities in a few moments under this one, because it is specific and germane to the policing activities. Just quickly note, one of the items you see are on claims trends, I'll simply note on that, the significance of claims trends is, just wanted to point out that that is used to inform the training program, or to inform our policy review or the techniques we're using, so as we look at the trends, from a trend, or look at the claims, we look at it from a holistic standpoint, does it tell or reveal anything of note? And if so, how might that be used to help the agency improve, or to review policies, or review the training, if there are training needs associated with it? Again, the next one is the personnel development, I'm just giving you a little more of the detail you'll see, so under that personnel development activity or portion of it, you'll see the hiring process, and to answer a question that is oftentimes asked, folks are saying about the recruitment process, it is very competitive. Orlando Police Department is, has an extremely high reputation, and certainly, it's a very extensive process, very competitive, and yes, to answer the question oftentimes asked, is a psychological profile performed as part of this process? It is part of that process, and so that is considered before officers are actually brought on duty. We have a very racially diverse organization as well, and that certainly is captured in the hiring process, and then you'll see the examples of the training program, and again, Chief Mina will touch on many of these as part of his presentation. Under transparency, these are the activities that the city of Orlando can take to build trust and public confidence when concerns arise, and so we'll talk, we've heard a lot of conversation about body cameras, in fact, on today's agenda is the request to pursue a grant for body cameras as well. I'll talk, Chief Mina will talk about the disciplinary actions and the other activities in place to provide a very transparent approach and process, and make certain folks know what we do and how we do it. The last one, I'll just mention very quickly, Police Data Initiative is a new one, we'll talk about this one more later, later date, but the Task Force on the 21st Century Policing emphasizes importance of data and technology in a role, as part of its role in fostering and building community trust. So the Police Data Initiative is one of those efforts they announced, and they have to date about 21 agencies, police agencies around the country are participating. We pursued it and believe it certainly would be of value for the city of Orlando, so the city of Orlando OPD will be the first in the state of Florida to participate in the Police Data Initiative as well. And that involves providing access to data reports, a lot of information we have, we'll make that available to, as part of this process. The community engagement, again, Chief Mina will touch on the bulk of these items and give you a very thorough report on what we're doing with respect to that. But in addition, as we know, this involves more, a community, community policing and community building involves more than just a police agency, and so we have many city efforts in place that we'll note on, and again, when we come back, we'll go in a little more detail and provide more information about exactly what we do in these various programs, what the results are in these programs, and how we believe they are certainly impacting our community and helping build relationships and trust. And then on the last is the economic development component, and again, you're very familiar with a lot of the activities that are noted in this, and again, we cover, we talk about this because oftentimes, at the core of the spirit of community is the hope, about opportunities, and we believe it's important that we certainly recognize the city of Orlando, our economic development activities, and the efforts we take to provide job creation that hits all areas and segments of our community, and we believe we've done that, and as well as some programs that are designed, specifically designed to target certain communities or certain populations that indeed help build trust, help build confidence, help build hope, and help build economic viability for our community. And so that's the overview of the assessment of the approach, we're working on those portions of it, and expect in a couple of months to come back and have a very conclusive report in terms of what we've been doing in those areas, and today, Chief Mina and I will go into fine detail on a number of the activities that the Orlando Police Department currently have in place or underway, or new initiatives that prepare to launch. With that, Chief Mina?
Good morning Chief.
Hi, good morning Mayor, good morning Commissioners. Certainly as Byron has explained, and there has been a nationwide focus on not only police shootings, but police use of force, and certainly, we have had our incidents here in Orlando, and that's what I'm gonna talk about, talk about response to resistance or use of force, some numbers and facts, also some measures that are in place and that are ongoing to address this issue, and also talk about our community outreach. So recent cases here, I've terminated two officers within the last few months for violating our policies regarding excessive force or use of force. We have two officers that are currently relieved of their police powers pending the outcomes of criminal investigations. So what you don't get to hear about a lot is the violence towards police, and I think it's important to frame that in this conversation. So in the past seven years, 3,000 times, our officers have been battered or assaulted, that's punched, kicked, thrown to the ground, tackled, kicked and spit on, and that same time period, the past seven years, we've taken 3,700 guns out of the hands of criminals. And that number does not count the thousands of guns that are legally carried, but are, that we run into on the street. And what you never hear about is the vast majority, overwhelmingly vast majority of those incidents, where we do recover firearms, are, those incidents are resolved peacefully, and you never hear about it. So just this year, six OPD officers have been shot at, three this week, three the previous weeks. Three Orange County deputies have been shot at this year. Of course, we had two murders of law enforcement officers in 2014, right here in our own community, and one officer from OPD was dragged 100 feet by a suspect who was trying to get away. So just kind of frame the violence against police officers, and what our officers are dealing with out there in the streets. The other things you never see are our officers and what they deal with, so I have some pictures of our officers, and it's dangerous out there, we have officers, broken noses, broken faces, broken fingers, broken arms, from just the work we do, compound fracture of an officer, broken, you know, the bone came right through his skin during resisting. This is a corrections officer right here at ORMC, he was attacked by a handcuffed prisoner, and just more injuries from suspects on police officers. There's an officer who was bit in the arm while trying to disarm a person who had a firearm, and the officer was bit in the arm. And just the other, you know, black eyes abrasions, and this happens many, many times, and all of which you never hear about. So this kind of gives you a snapshot over the past seven years, every time our officers have been battered or assaulted, citywide, very prevalent, but you never hear about. And you may, you may remember some of these numbers from our end-of-year review, so almost 400,000 contacts with the public we have every year, 112,000 of those are traffic stops, suspicious person stops, over 16,000 arrests, and we only used force 610 times, so that represents less than 4% of the people we arrest, we actually have to use force. It's not, it is not very common to use force. Most people comply with the orders of police and are taken into custody seamlessly, very So this kind of pie chart represents, the blue, in the blue in that pie chart, you see all the arrests, and that red piece of the pie is the amount of times we use force. So out of all those arrests, we had 10 excessive force complaints out of 16,000 arrests, and three were sustained excessive force complaints. This pie chart represents what techniques we are using. So for the past seven or eight years, we have really been pushing our officers to use instruments like pepper spray and the taser, which don't typically cause injury. Pepper spray is very irritating, but the irritation is gone in about 15 or 30 minutes. So in those 610 uses of force last year, we used the pepper spray 40% of the time, we used the taser 25% of the time, so 65% of the time, we're using instruments that don't normally cause injury to suspects. We only use strikes, that's punches and kicks, 14% of the time. A lot of our takedowns, that's 16% of the time, and the reason those are captured is because it is, it's not technically a use of force, but if someone claims injury after they're being taken to the ground, we investigate that as well. And you see, we only use our police baton, our impact weapon, 1% of the time when we use force, out of those 610 times. So I kind of want to go through.
Chief, I just think that bears emphasis that use of pepper spray is use of force, because I think a lot of people would not consider that, so when we're looking at our stats, understanding that somebody, or an officer using pepper spray is considered, or qualifies as use of force.
Absolutely Mayor, that is a technique that is a use of force, so every time an officer uses pepper spray, the use of force investigation takes place, and it's just that it is an alternative to those other techniques that doesn't cause injury, so that's why we really have been pushing it to our officers to use that pepper spray, and they have, they have listened, so the use of pepper spray has gone up by 232% over the past seven years, while all other techniques have decreased, including strikes, and taser, and the use of K-9. So our use of force investigation process, every time an officer uses force, we do this process, every single time, whether it's pepper spray, or a baton strike, or a kick, or even if we didn't use force, but the person is claiming injury, we still do this investigation. So supervisor will respond to every single time, every single incident at the location at that time, take photos of the officer, of the suspects, and any evidence there, and we also search for video. The supervisor at that time talks to all the witnesses, all the officers, and the suspect. So at that time, the supervisor, based on everything he has, or he or she has, will approve or disapprove, but the process doesn't stop there, no matter if it's approved or disapproved. That's, it's a seven-step process that we go through, that goes all the way up to the deputy chief, and then to Internal Affairs, and I think this is a good time to talk about the Noel Carter case, because in this case, I immediately had Internal Affairs open up an internal investigation, I did not wait for the process to be complete, because I know the seriousness of the issue. Additionally, I called the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, no one else, I called the Florida Department of Law Enforcement to have a third-party independent investigation take a look at this investigation, and that investigation is ongoing. So after the Florida Department of Law Enforcement completes their investigation, our Internal Affairs Department will conclude and do our own investigation based on our own policies. So Florida Department of Law Enforcement, they'll do a criminal investigation into this case, which they have done for us before, and then after that's complete, it will go to Internal Affairs. And then beyond that, we'll go back to the FDLE investigation, even if the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, no matter what they come back with, whatever result, I'm still gonna give that investigation to the state attorney's office, just to have a third set of eyes, another set of eyes look at that investigation. So beyond that, it'll go to our Internal Affairs to see what policies were violated, and there'll be a dissonant process, and every single excessive force complaint goes before the Citizen Police Review Board, the nine-member panel that you select, every single one, and they can make recommendations to the chief police based on the investigation. And on top of that, it's very important to note, you know, I think there's a misconception out there that I have defended or condoned the actions of the officers involved in this case, what I'm defending is the process. Let's let the investigation be completed before we make a judgment, so I'm just defending the process, and, you know, that process takes time, it takes time. The officers are on a modified assignment right now, in plain clothes, working day shift, not doing their normal assignment, they won't be working off-duty at any clubs, but that was more for their well-being. So and like I said, finally, that case, like all our excessive force cases, very few that we have, are given to the Citizens Police Review Board as a final check and balance. So I think this is important to note as well, back in 2008, the University of Central Florida and Florida Gulf Coast in 2008 found that we actually use less force than we could have used. So in other words, we could have been at a higher level, but our officers chose to use less force, and we're gonna ask them to do that study again. And you know, I think the issue of use of force has been very, very prevalent throughout the country and here locally, and there's this sense that officers are using more force, and I think it's just more prevalent because you're seeing more cellphone videos, seeing more business video out there, that's my personal opinion, because at the Orlando Police Department, use of force by our officers is down by 10% over the past year. And I talked about this earlier, that so our use of pepper spray has increased while all other techniques have decreased, as punches, kicks, baton, and taser. All those techniques went down last year, but the only technique that went up was pepper spray, because it is an alternative to those other techniques that cause injuries, and pepper spray causes less injuries to suspects. Byron, a little to our, we do want to have a very transparent process, and that's why, you know, I spoke to you a little while ago about body warrant cameras, and how the Orlando Police Department, over a year and a half ago, thought that was the right thing to do, and we set in motion that study with the University of South Florida to do that one-year-long study, and we came back that, yes, we do want to use the body warrant cameras, and you know, honestly, we would've went to the body warrant. And you know, honestly, we would have went to the body warrant cameras, no matter what the study came of with our staff and I, I think it's a great idea. And I talked about this as well. For those serious investigations, we do have the Florida Department of Law Enforcement investigate those because we do know it's a third independent party and just to remain transparent. And then we will give it to the state attorney's office and there'll be criminal charges when warranted. And on the topic of use of force, I want you to know that I have had very strong messaging and communication to all of my officers from me and from the command staff on the seriousness of the use of force. So we have reviewed all of our current policies and that's still ongoing, always looking to get better, always looking to mirror the best practices around the state and around the country. We've always done that. And we've been accredited now for 17 years. And so every few years, we go through the re-accreditation process. As part of that process, we bring in, we do a mock assessment to get us ready for the real assessment. So we just went through that mock assessment and so law enforcement executives from the state of Florida came and met with me. And I told them, I want you to specifically look at our use of force policies, our internal affairs policies, our citizen complaint policies, our early intervention policies and take a hard look, pick it apart and tell me what you think. And they, they did that in the mock assessment. They said, the Orlando Police Department is top-notch, you guys are doing the best practices, you're doing above and beyond what many other agencies already do. But as part of the real accreditation process, in the end of July, beginning of August, I'm going to ask that different set of assessors to do the exact same thing. And they come in and that's the real assessment where they will re-accredit us. And not only do they look at the policies, but they go back and investigate and audit the paperwork to make sure that we are adhering to those policies. So it's a very rigorous process that we've been doing for 17 years now and have been re-accredited to. And then finally, I think I've shown that I have been severe, probably more so than any other chief in recent history, on the use of force. Two terminations and two officers related to their police powers pending the outcomes of those investigations. And we also talked about our hiring process and, you know, I get asked this all the time within the last year or so, are people still really want to be police officers during this day and age? And absolutely they do. We have over 3,700 applications a year. People still want to become Orlando police officers. They still want to come to one of the best agencies in the nation. And we get a lot of officers from surrounding agencies that want to come here. So they have to take a civil service test, physical abilities test, they go through an interview process with recruiting, they do a polygraph, they do extensive background checks, fingerprinting. And then I interview every single person that we want to hire, every single person. And then after they've given their offer of the job, we polygraph them again to see if there's anything we missed because it's a long process. And as Byron alluded to, we do a psychological. So there's a written psychological exam and then that person that we're going to hire actually sits down with a real person, a psychologist, and has that one-on-one interview. And I can tell you that we do not hire anyone that is not recommended by the psychologist. And of course, the final step is a medical evaluation. So because of, you know, some of the issues that we have had here locally and the issues nationally, we have really gone through great lengths to have great training this upcoming year. The state of Florida only requires some training, that's their word, some training every four years in defensive tactics. And if you remember the story a few months ago, I think it was on Nightline on NYPD shortly after the Eric Garner incident, those officers up there hadn't gone hands-on in defensive tactic training in like seven years, some of them. We do that every year, several times a year, very highly trained officers in the use of force. So this year, because of some of our issues, these are the things we are concentrating on. Dealing with handcuffed prisoners because that is difficult to deal with at times, de-escalation and assessment, you know, when should you de-escalate? When should you escalate? When should you step back and assess? You know, and alternatives to arrests in certain situations. Maybe it's not the best time to go hands-on with that person or even arrest them based on the crowd, based on the circumstances. Shoot, no shoot, decision-based training. We want officers, it's very, very difficult. These things happen in the split second, in the blink of an eye, someone could lose their life. So we want to put those officers through that decision-making process and get them better. And then we're also doing fair and impartial police training, you know that, as racial profiling training. We had a nationwide expert, Dr. Lori Friedel from the University of South Florida, come in and teach me, the command staff and members from our community on this fair and impartial training. And that training will touch every single officer at the Orlando Police Department this year. And on top of that, I thought this was very important to bring in someone from the outside as well. So we're going to have an instructor from the FBI come in and give us ethics and a civil rights refresher. We go through ethics training every couple of years, but we wanted them to come in again and give us a refresher, especially with dealing with civil rights. And then officers are also going to go through some online training that's put on by the Department of Justice. That last one, that's crisis intervention training. That is a 40-hour course for officers on how to deal with people with mental health issues. Because we know, that's also a big hot topic in this country this year, that we know that sometimes people with mental health issues, officers, we don't want them to interpret their actions the wrong way and start thinking about, well, maybe this person has a mental health issue and they're, they're not that violent or there's a reason they're acting this way. So that's a 40-hour course that we are in the process of sending every single first responder to. This is something I talked about earlier and not every police department has this. We have an early intervention program. And this identifies officers who show symptoms of stress on the job because of citizen complaints or use of force. So we have a policy and it's established criteria. So once that mark gets triggered, you know, so many uses of force in a three-month period, then the early intervention process begins. And that's not to say the officer did anything wrong. All those uses of forces could have been approved, but we wanted, we go back and double-check them, yet another check and balance to see if there's an issue. So the step one, you know, we'll review the file, the supervisor and what, so the supervisor will go back and he'll look at those, say those three use of force reports. And he'll review them again to see if there's a pattern between the three different use of force reports. And then the supervisor will sit down one-on-one with the officer and talk about things like, are you having marital problems? Are you having financial issues? Are you working too much? Are you stressed out? Do you need to change a venue? Do you need to go to a different side of town? Do you need to go to a different shift? So they'll talk about all those things. And then after that interview, the lieutenant and the sergeant and the officer sit down together, talk about those things again, talk about what led up to those citizen complaints or talk about what led up to the use of force. So then based on those two interviews and the review of all those reports in the file, the supervisor will complete his or her report and make a recommendation. So those recommendations can be, there could be no problem, problem or pattern. It could be just a very busy officer in a busy side of town and he happened to use force three times. And that could be he pepper sprayed three people. That will trigger the early intervention program. The supervisor can recommend additional training. You know, we can have them sit down with our training staff and you, and they can say things like, well, your use of force may have been justified, but did you think about this? Did you think about that? Did you think about using another technique? We'll also have times where we refer, mandatory referral to employee assistance so the officer can talk to a counselor. We can have them attend a stress awareness course or we can have the supervisor just monitor the officer very closely. And they're not limited, limited to the recommendations. They can have them go through human diversity training. They can have them go to, you know, how to deal with people training, anything driving training. Because if you have so many accidents, this is also triggered. So anything the supervisor thinks is necessary to help. And it still doesn't end there. That's followed up by internal affairs after three months. The final review comes and is presented. So if I'm the captain and my officer has been triggered and is in this early intervention system, I take all that information and I present it to a board of the eight other captains, all my senior manager. And they talk about the case and they talk about the use of forces or the citizen complaints. They said, this is what happened, this is how many times what happened, this is what the supervisor is recommending, this is what my recommendation is. Then those nine captains, they give their final recommendation to the deputy chief of the bureau. So and the officers know that the training or counseling, it's not disciplinary, it's not punitive. We know in, say it was a use of force situation, that they used force three times in three months. We know that all those use of force reports could have been approved. The officer could have done the right thing, but maybe needs some counseling, maybe needs some training in some other areas. And so just to give you an idea, this happens about 18 to 20 times a year. I think we have, you know, less than five this year so far. So I wanted to talk about some of our community outreach, community forums. Ever since the incident Ferguson, we have hosted in or participated in 15 different forums or town hall meetings and we have more scheduled. I also hosted the Chiefs Community Leadership Academy. That's where we invited certain people from the community. We wanted you, we wanted them to come in. And what we focused on, it was a kind of a citizens police academy shortened version, but we really focused on the use of force, police shootings, how we have the Florida Department of Law Enforcement come in and investigate, our internal affairs process. And what I told the citizens, and there were 40 of them, what I told them is I want you to take a hard look at what we're doing. It's your police department. You tell me if you think there's something we should be doing wrong. So all those recommendations are getting filtered to me now. And then Byron talked about the White House Police Data Initiative, something new we're doing. We saw that out there. We decided, you know what, we want to be a part, there's only 20 other agencies that are doing that, but we noticed there's no one else in Florida that's a part of that. Well, as in an effort to remain transparent and get better, we want to be a part of that. And basically, that's going to be compiling stats that we already compile here at the Orlando Police Department, tracking things that we already track, but making it easier for the public to gain access to that information such as putting it out on social media or on their website. So we're very excited to be a part of that. And you know, this is something, briefing the mayor a few weeks ago, he had mentioned, well, why not, when we were talking about teen community forums, why not partner with Orange County Public Schools? And I thought that was a brilliant idea. So right now, our, our staff is working with Orange County Public Schools to develop some type of curriculum in the schools at the high school level to talk about what we talk about in these teen community forums, like what are your rights? You know, what should you do when the police stop you? Why are the police asking these certain things? And we're really looking forward to it. I think it's a great idea. And then this is something that, you know, Criminal Justice Institute, that's our police academy at Valencia, one of the best academies in the nation, no doubt. And this is something that they came up with, but I am totally on board with. So in the police academy, we're taught things, you know, they have blocks of instruction on ethics and values and human diversity. What they want to do is they want to weave that philosophy, weave that into every single training curriculum. So they want to weave that ethics and values into use of force and not just have it be a block of instruction. So they are on the forefront of it. They have to get that by the state, but they have, they have my support as well. So just some of the shots from the Community Leadership Police Academy. And I'm going to talk about our community involvement, things we do with the youth that probably a lot of people don't know about. We try and get it out there as much as we can, social media. We do a lot with our youth in this community. And I'll talk about, I'm going to show some videos here in a second, but I want to talk about the block parties down at the bottom where it says new. That's an idea we got from Fresno, California. So what they do out there is to gain trust in the community, to garner support from, from some of the more challenging neighborhoods, they just go out and throw a block party, a barbecue. You know, so what we're trying to, what we're trying to do is have the police-citizen interaction in non-enforcement type situations. We want more of that. And the yoga for young women, that was an officer, that was an idea from an officer. She said, well, hey, we're doing all these things like balling after dark and the fishing for the men, the teens, the youth, the males, but what about the women? So she wants to teach women, young women in Paramore about yoga and how to do yoga. We just thought it was a brilliant idea and we're very, very excited about that as well. Ed, if you could play that first video for me?
We have all Dueling Dragons. I would like to present you with-
And this is our Dueling Dragons program.
[applause] Most people, when you think of, you know, cops, it's always a negative aspect, but this is a great program. They, we get to see them in a new way.
So we have our neighborhood patrol unit, they are participating this year. In the past, some other officers have done it, SWAT team. There's some officers who do it, volunteer to do it every year. This year, I want our neighborhood patrol unit to get involved and pick kids from the neighborhoods they patrol. And it's just great, and the video sells itself, but you know, officers and kids right next to each other, there's no gun belts on, no vest, no heavy equipment. And it just, non-enforcement type situations, a great, great mentoring thing. And I think we have, the next video is of our balling after dark program is just starting up.
This is about three months in planning, so I want to thank all the youth for showing up. I'm very excited about tonight. I'm hoping that this is the start of something beautiful, that this will set the platform and be a catalyst to some open discussions that we want to have with the police.
We partnered with Parks and Recreation for that and just another opportunity for our officers to interact with the youth in their neighborhoods they patrol without uniforms on and have those conversations. And you know, Scott Maxwell just did a great story on it this weekend. You know, one of the things that we talk about so that if officers see some of these kids out on the street or vice versa, the kids see our officers out in the street, that there's a, hey, I remember you from balling after dark, you're the one that has a great jump shot. Those are the, it's the kind of trust that they want to do. And it's been a great success. We had, just had another big one this past week and... You know, some officers came to us about six months ago and we have all different kind of clubs at the Orlando Police Department. We have running clubs and different kind of clubs that officers want to do just to, you know, do something different. They came to me and they wanted to do a fishing club. And I said, that's fine. I said, but, I said, you have to promise that you take kids from the neighborhood and teach them how to fish. Some of these kids may never have been on a boat. So that's already started and a great feedback on that and looking to continue that as well. Beautiful feet ball. We were so very proud to be a part of this. These are young women who come from challenging situations, some of them victims of sex trafficking, some of them homeless. And what we did is we partnered with some other law enforcement agencies and we held this ball for them. So they were able to dress up, have a nice dinner, great conversation with some really great role models. great role models, who even danced with them in uniform. So just, again, another method of breaking down the barriers. And some of these women, when the police officers first showed up in uniforms, some of them ran to the other side of the room, because they're just not used to that non-enforcement type interaction with law enforcement. But, you know, throughout the night, just talking and having some great conversation, some, you know, the barriers were broken down and some bonds were formed. And, you know, when I put this email out looking for volunteers, it was answered immediately. We had too many volunteers, officers who wanted to do this. Very, very proud of the men and women of Orlando Police Department. Just continuing with our community engagement efforts, you know, most of you know about these. We, you know, we do the Citizens Police Academy, we do our Senior Citizens Police Academy, we do a Hispanic Citizens Police Academy. Yeah, I've spoken in front of the mayor's council of clergy on tough topics such as use of force and community engagement. Our Teen Police and Fire Academy just started today, and that's ongoing. I think there's about forty of our youth in there, and it's just another opportunity for us to kind of talk about the police department and talk about, you know, let's keep our kids out of trouble, let's have them doing the right thing. Yeah, and you all know about our Neighborhood Watch and National Night Out, you know, nationally recognized several years in a row, either first or second or third place for jurisdictions our size, and just another way to get out there in the community and share our stories. So I, you know, I've talked about those community forums as well. And, you know, at one recent community forum, I thought this was very important to share. A lady who had grown up and lived in Richmond Heights for, you know, thirty years or so, she said this to me. She felt that, she's been to places like Baltimore and Cleveland, and she felt that Orlando was different because she felt she had access to the mayor, to the commissioners, to the police chief, and that their voices were heard. I thought that was very compelling and true. And Park Walk Talk, that is just the message that I send to my officers every day. So, yes, they know that I like it when bad guys go to jail and crime is reduced, but it is also important for us to have that interaction, especially with our youth, in the non-enforcement type situations, getting out of our police cars and just talking to our youth. And as a matter of fact, this summer, the University of Central Florida is doing another study with us. They're going to have graduate students ride with our police officers and just observe. And what they're going to study and measure are the things that aren't captured in police reports, or incident reports, or tickets, or interview reports. They're going to capture those moments that happen between officers and citizens. How are the police officers treating our citizens? How are the citizens treating our police officers? So that's going to happen this summer, all summer long. And just some of the pictures of us doing the community forums, and, you know, great forums, a lot of tough questions for me, but when people hear the great lengths we go through to investigate our use of force, and that we have the FDLE come in and investigate our police shootings, and all those police shootings are reviewed by the state attorney's office, they're like, wow, we didn't know that. We didn't know that you guys were battered and assaulted three thousand times. We didn't know that you got thirty-seven hundred guns off the street. We didn't know that, yet many times, when you use force, it's just pepper spray. So great opportunity for us to tell our story. Again, the Teen Community Forum, where you see the two kids sitting there, they're sitting there like they're in a vehicle being pulled over by the police. So what we're doing there is role-playing, you know, what you should do, what you should not do, when you get stopped by the police. What are your rights? And what we tell kids, and even adults as well, the time to fight with the police is not on the side of the road. That's why we have internal affairs, that's why we have a court system. You know, comply with the orders, and everything seems to go a lot smoother. But there is a way that you can take action if you think you were stopped wrongly, if you think you were falsely arrested. This is just another great picture that, you know, our officers responded to this call because a neighbor said these kids were out of control, running around, making noise in the parking lot. Well, they're just being kids, and luckily, our officers recognize that, so they spent a half hour with these kids, playing with them in the parking lot, because they are just kids. And someone happened to snap this picture of the kids, send it to me, and thank us for doing things like that with our youth. Just, you know, so many more moments like this that are never captured, especially in the media, or officers. We do this stuff all the time, and you just never hear about it. You know, we read to kids in the schools. I've done it myself, very, very rewarding, and that message is spreading to our officers. If you have time, get involved in reading to kids, so they can see we're just, we're human beings, just like they are. And there'll be that trust from a very young age.
Chief, can you do one more thing for me? Could you explain the state law that gives the officers a bill of rights?
Absolutely. So Florida state statutes, officer, peace officers' bill of rights, says that I cannot impose severe discipline, like termination or demotion or transfer, until the internal affairs investigation is completed. That's state law, and that's why the officers have rights as well. There has to be a thorough investigation before we can just fire someone here in the state of Florida. Very, thanks, Mayor, for bringing that up. Very important law.
Thank you. Byron?
And just to wrap up, reflect, but clearly, we know and understand, and certainly heard from each of you, the mayor, on a commitment to safe neighborhoods, a safe community. We know that residents and our visitors must feel safe in order for us to achieve our higher aspirations as well. This assessment, so Mayor Dyer gave us the charge, let's not wait. Let's not see how the dialogue is playing out in other places, other communities. Let's take the very detailed, in-depth assessment of our organization now. We certainly hope that as a result of this review, this assessment, much of it will be done, a number of it will be done by outside partners, as you heard Chief mention, in terms of FBI coming in, the accreditation process, UCF working in partnership. So we're inviting others to come in and participate and help us along with this process. Certainly, the hope is, as a result of this, we will certainly minimize or reduce those potential for incidents of concern. We know, though, we are human, and so there may be the likelihood of something happening at some point in time. And so what we can do is ensure that we've built trust in terms of the process, and in terms of accountability, and in terms of how we approach, and certainly the relationships. And so that's why we're taking this holistic approach. So that as a community, a community can certainly feel that public trust and confidence, that things will be handled in the appropriate way. And so that's what this effort is about. That's the charge that Mayor Dyer has given us. We certainly have seen the results in terms of decreasing crime, and we believe, in large part, that's due to the partnership, the involvement of the neighbors, through Neighborhood Watch programs, through citizen awareness. And so that confidence, that trust, that relationship with the community is so important to achieving a safe community and safe neighborhoods. And the last, we certainly believe, and we certainly heard it stated often, we're a world-class city, and we certainly believe, and we certainly want our community to feel that we have a world-class police organization that's here to protect and defend and serve them. With that, Mayor, we're available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Byron, and thank you, Chief. And I think it's incredibly important that the public have an understanding of what the processes are that we use, and the training and the techniques. So I certainly appreciate the presentation today, Chief. Commissioner Sheehan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, Chief and Byron. And I think it's important for folks to, they say, you know, we want the counsel, we want the, we want an immediate, you know, statement. And the bottom line is, I'm not even allowed to make an immediate statement on alleged suspect arrested in my neighborhood. I have to say alleged, and I have to, you know, when I'm giving out public information, I can't even make an accusation against a person who has committed a crime. I have to be very careful in how I word it, and I've been counseled by OPD because people have rights. So again, if you're going to say criminals, and people who are committing crimes have rights, we have to also, and have a due process. We need to give due process to our officers as well, if they're accused of doing something wrong. And I think that's only fair, and I'm often counseled about saying alleged and things like that, when I'm talking to neighborhoods about these things, when arrests are made and things like that. So I think that's important to bring up, too. I don't go off and, you know, say, hey, this person was arrested, so all your burglaries are going to be over. I have to say, this is an alleged suspect, this person was arrested. You know, we have to be very careful in how we communicate that to neighborhoods as well. There are union rules, there's a process, because officers are beaten and assaulted. I remember one situation, and I'll never forget this, where an officer actually went in a retention pond to rescue someone, and he was a suspect in a crime, and the officer was actually beaten. The guy grabbed the officer's baton, the officer was trying to save him from drowning, the guy grabbed the officer's baton, managed to not drown, but grabbed the officer's baton and beat him so badly in the face that the officer ended up having to go off, he could no longer, he had to go on, he could no longer do his job. He had to go on disability. So, again, those are the cases that you don't hear about, that we hear about, and I think that's important to tell the other side. There's a national story about how that officer that was just about to go on a maternity leave lost her life the day before. So officers are beaten, kicked, punched, spit on, all kinds of things every day, and it's not right, but that's how people behave. I do not, however, condone violence against, once someone is incapacitated, once someone's in handcuffs. I mean, we also had a bad case where an officer, you know, somebody was handcuffed in a gurney, and he wouldn't give a urine sample, and he was tased. That's wrong. So we need to take swift action against officers that misbehave in that way. But again, it's a very, very small percentage of officers that behave that way. Relieved, out of sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-seven arrests, we have, you know, two firings, and at the same time, we have three thousand assaults against officers. So there has to be a balance in terms of how we deal with this. I do support body cameras, because I think it will deal, you know, we'll be able to have evidence against an officer if he misbehaves, or to show the entire story, if we need to do so. So I think that's a very, very good thing to have, in terms of a tool. But, you know, we have to remember, there are two million sworn officers in America, and we have ten to fifteen extreme cases that are in the media right now. That's an, I know, that's, I think that officers are being portrayed unfairly. I think, yes, some people have done some extremely, extremely bad things, but I think the majority of officers are very, very good people, just like I think majority of people in political life are good people, and we always get judged by the people who do stupid things. You know, the political people do stupid things, too. And again, I think that this process with the Mr. Coward's investigation, I think it needs to go through the entire process until we, you know, before we make judge, any rushed judgment. But something that I'm concerned, you know, with the, we used to have a reputation at OPD, they used to call us, oh, please don't shoot, you know, that we wouldn't take action. And I'm afraid if we don't, if we become so frightened of taking action, we're going to become like Baltner, because once the officer started standing down, the crime started to increase. And that's the last thing that folks in my neighborhoods want to see. They want, they do not want to see crime increase. They want to see fair treatment, but they don't want to see, you know, the mean streets, so to speak. They want to see a fair and impartial way of the streets being protected. So, again, Chief, thank you for the presentation. My biggest concern is, once someone's incapacitated, handcuffed, clearly under control, that no one, once they're in that situation, is abused, because that's just not fair. Once you're handcuffed, once you've got, you know, five or six officers around you, there's no reason for anybody to get beat up or anything like that, any more than I condone a suspect picking, punching, or kicking, or biting an officer either. So, again, that's, those are the concerns that I have, and I think it should go through a complete investigation, and, you know, and I think that, I think this will be handled fairly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you. And Chief, thank you for the presentation. The more I work with the OPD, the more impressed with the individuals that we deal with on a regular basis. One of the things that I think is important is the level of transparency that we have continued to have. I know when I joined the city, that was important for Mike McCoy. It would be important for every police chief since then, that the information we have is just the information. We give out whatever we can publicly and legally allowed to give out, and then people can draw their own conclusion. I think often what happens is that, some of the times when the conclusion is drawn, it's not reported back as clearly as the original violation. It's the idea that the news travels a little bit faster in a different way. And so I would, I don't know how to encourage us to get that information out, don't know what we can legally, because you're now dealing with individuals' rights, both the suspect as well as the police officers. But I'd like to try and figure out how to get that information out to people. The other concern I have, and I think I would probably share a little bit with Commissioner Sheehan, but as these instances go forward, one of the questions I wrote down as you were going through, the use of force investigation process. How many of those, a question to you, how many of those actually go to FDLE, number one? And what's the threshold that takes it to FDLE? Now, I applaud you for what you've done so far, and that this is unacceptable, we need to make sure that we have somebody else investigating it, and I applaud that so far. But we have this whole process, then what sends it to FDLE? Is that an opinion of investigators?
Yeah, there is no threshold. That's done on a case-by-case basis, and I make that decision based on input from my staff. And in this case, because of the high emotions surrounding this case, I thought it best to have a third-party, you know, independent view of the incident. But certainly, you know, in the past, OPD has investigated, our own officers have put handcuffs on our own officers before. We can do that. It's just another layer of transparency that we've decided to do. FDLE investigates all of our police shootings, and I do have an agreement with the special agent in charge. You know, if there is another case that is not a shooting that I really want them to investigate, they will.
And back to use of force again, what is the requirement of FDLE in terms of investigation? If a weapon is discharged, aren't they required to do an investigation?
Yeah, absolutely. Our written agreement with Florida Department of Law Enforcement is that if a person is shot by OPD, they will investigate, and they do.
And it's literally an automatic investigation?
Absolutely, yeah. They're basically called almost immediately at the night of the incident.
And then there's a step in process that begins, where some information is gathered, and, I mean, literally, it's a, the assumption I get from the news media is that if somebody gets killed, then we go and talk to FDLE, and that's, and that's not the case at all. The case is, if a weapon is, I think, if a weapon is discharged, then we begin to start a separate level of investigation, effectively as a use-of-force investigation, that says, what really occurred? And I think that's, the general public think that we just sit back, and when media screams and yells, we then just go and do something. There's this whole process that happens before then.
Absolutely. And in the past, in past years, where we have discharged our weapons and may not have struck the subject, we typically would do that ourselves. In the David Johnson case, where I terminated him, we did that investigation ourselves and gave it to the state attorney's office. In the most, one of the most recent cases, our officer fired his gun but didn't hit anyone, we decided, I called FDLE and said I wanted them to investigate that case.
The other question I want to ask, and I guess it's really an opinion, I don't know if I have the answer statistics or not, is how many officers go through a career and never discharge their weapon? I mean, the idea really is that the, that the community sees a paramilitary organization, and they have a weapon, and they're using the weapon. But there are, there's a very large percentage, I understand, that never actually discharge a weapon during their entire career.
Almost never. Many police officers will never, ever fire their weapon at someone in defense of their life.
And yet, even though they never fire the weapon, they go through, in the city of Orlando, they go through extensive training, quarterly, I think, isn't it, or is it every six months where they have to be certified?
Very extensive training, firearms training, that they have to qualify on several times a year.
Back to my question, though, the process to get to FDLE really kind of comes through you, I would assume. And then, and that threshold really is a function of two things, where you feel that we need to get immediate input internally or externally, as well as when we go through an investigation that is more silent, then there may be a recommendation that goes one step further. And I think that's, we need to see that, I think the media needs to see that you're engaged in this, and you're seeking complete transparency, at the same time trying to keep law and order and protect our citizens.
Absolutely.
I want to tell you how much I just appreciate you personally, and appreciate your leadership team. It is often... It is often, when you're dealing with organizations much like yours, there is often a miscommunication of what your goals are down the line. And I will tell you, there is not a miscommunication in OPD. Every officer I've seen, from the line officer all the way up, have exactly the same type of opinion you are. Let's get it right. Let's move forward. And at the same time, there's seven hundred sworn officers, and not everybody's perfect. But they, we expect a higher level of interaction with the citizens, and we're going to move down that path. So, thank you very much for what you've accomplished in keeping our city safe.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Byron and Chief Mina, for that presentation. I can also say that the mayor and the commission, and also yourself, Chief, are committed to transparency and accountability and also building relationships with the community. From the first day that I've gotten here, we have attended many, many, many community forums. Even when the tough questions are answered and you know that you're going into a situation, you still show up. You still show up. So I appreciate your leadership in that aspect. I can echo Commissioner Sheehan when she state that there's, out of all the hundreds of police officers, we can't put everybody underneath that white umbrella saying, you know, if one has had some misbehavior, all are. And I can truly say, with all my interaction with OPD and the community, I see that bridge of trust building by the great community policing that we're putting in place here. I don't excuse a battery on a law enforcement officer. Those photographs that you showed were horrendous. And that is a job that I'm certain none of us that aren't in that field can imagine when you go outside to protect and serve, not necessarily knowing if you're going to come back home. But I know it's a job that, you know, we sign up for, and those things, those things we should expect. Also, there is no excuse for citizens to walk outside and think those that are going to protect and serve them to also be abused or not saying with this aspect excessive force or not feeling protected. So we're gonna, we're working on building that bridge of trust. I know, as I stated, my office, the mayor's office, and OPD, even prior to this incident, as you stated earlier, have been planning two major community forums with Valencia and the clergy. And we're still going to see that forth. I just don't want it to be said when it is completed and all the plan is completed is because of this certain instance. But these are things that we have been planning for a while now. It's just haven't came to fruition, there's some loose ends that have to be tied. Your office has also, you know, I know there's a lot of occurrences happening downtown. And one of the things that we have been trying to do, and we have, we're doing, I think it's July twenty-seventh, is having our first national out District Five downtown Orlando, where we're bringing all the businesses and the west side of District Five and all of the residents from downtown District Five and club owners to Heritage Park, so that they can interact with OPD and there'll be vendors and information. And hopefully, some of the healing and different resources are going to be available there. I'm glad that we're having that. But I must say, when you stated that a young lady from Richmond Heights believed that City Hall is a place and where the community voices are heard, I want to assure the community that their voices are heard here, that their opinions do matter, that we are moving forward with this incident in a transparent way. And I agree, there has to be a process. I don't want us to rush to judgment on Mr. Carter's efforts nor the officer's effort. But in that, I'd like to applaud you, and I didn't know, and many probably didn't know because, that you have modified their duties, that you have taken them right now off the streets of Orlando and placed them in a modified effort there at OPD. But may I ask, because there is concern, and the work that we have been doing, I don't want undone, that, is, what is that modified duty? If it's public, if it's not, I can understand if there's some type of, though we want to be transparent, and that's the reason I'm asking these questions.
Yeah, absolutely. They're in a modified assignment, basically to put them in our criminal investigations and plaincloze assignments. So they'll do a lot of follow-up on the phone.
Okay.
But, yeah, not in uniform, not out responding to calls. A modified assignment.
Thank you. I guess the other, the other question that I have usually, and I heard the mayor, thank you for that piece of education, Mayor, and Chief Mina, about the officer's bill of rights. And how long does the citizen review board come to a conclusion or FDLE? And I know you said it'd take a while. Is there a condensed form or how long is there usually steps of that? Because I know the community's going to be asking.
Yeah, it depends on the investigation. So right now, we're kind of waiting until the Florida Department of Law Enforcement is done with their investigation, so we can include that information in our investigation. Like I said, when the Florida Department of Law Enforcement is done, regardless of their recommendation, I'm still going to give that case to the state attorney's office and have the state attorney put another set of eyes on it. So once that is completed, that's when I'll formally begin our internal investigation. Everyone will be interviewed again, and all the evidence will be looked at again. Typically, we have to get our investigations done in a hundred and eighty days by law, but we typically wrap those up in ninety days. But like I said, we won't, we won't begin that portion until we hear back from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and the state attorney's office. As far as the citizens review board, they meet here every month. So as those cases that they review, excessive force cases, or any other cases that I want them to review, as those cases come completed, they will see that on their, at their monthly meeting.
Thank you, Chief. And I just want to say that, and I've been getting calls, and some of the folk that will show up today, they want me to let you know that they appreciate the work that you're doing in the community, that this isn't really about Chief Mina. They just feel a certain way about a gentleman being, you know, kicked while he was not defending himself. But it has no benefit on what they're going to say or do there because of you. They really appreciate the work that you're doing in the community and support what you're doing in your community policing. And I'd just like to conclude with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anges.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Chief. And Byron, thank you for your presentation this morning. Obviously, you know, I come from your background and all of that, and it's a, it's a pleasure seeing that we still have a lot of work to do in our community in spite of all of the great things that you've just spoke about. But Mayor Dyer, I think this is really great that we have this meeting here this morning. But as you can see with the empty seats and that kind of thing, we don't have enough of the public here to hear this information. And we don't have an opportunity to get a response from the public. So Mayor, I would suggest that we have a town hall meeting right here in Orlando City Hall talking about this very issue and inviting the public to be able to be here, maybe six o'clock in the evening or something like this, so that they can hear some of the responses from the chief and from the CAO, and then also give some responses too. Because the one thing that I do know is there are two sides of the coin. And we've heard one side this morning, and we definitely do need to hear from the public as well. Because I think it's important that we get to really hear from the public. And Chief, when you were at my town hall meeting there at the Smith Center regarding the body cameras, that was one thing that we actually did. And you heard the testimony of the people, and you could hear and feel the emotions that were involved there with the individuals, specifically of a lady that talked about her son being shot in the back and died at the hands of the police, but not knowing that whole scenario. And she wanted the case reopened. But the state attorney, Jeff Ashton, said unless there is new information, we just can't reopen a case. And so, and that kind of information was very important at that particular event. And the people had an opportunity to express themselves and ask some questions. But one of the, I guess, concerns that I have, because we know that the department has all of its policies and procedures and everything that the officers do go by. But there's a certain culture within, within the organization. And that's something that sometimes we just can't describe. But no matter how much we as the managers, or you as the managers, may say and present your cases to the officers, some officers are going to go and do their own thing, regardless of whatever is being said. So what's the internal culture of OPD?
Well, I think, and that just goes to show you the, what the culture is, because I talked about our use of force and how actual, actually, our use of force is down over the past two years. And that more often than not, we're using pepper spray and taser against people that are resisting arrest. So I don't think there's any underlying problem or culture at the Orlando Police Department. Like I said, I think this is a nationwide issue, you just happen to be hearing about it and seeing more of it, because there is more video out there. You know, I think those numbers are pretty compelling and show the culture. You know, sixteen thousand arrests, we only use force, less than four percent of the time when we arrest someone. So that tells me that there's a culture that when people comply with our orders to put their hands behind their back, most people comply and those arrest situations are peacefully resolved. So I think the numbers show for itself that there is no, they're very good men and women at the Orlando Police Department. We're human, we make mistakes, and it's my job to fix those mistakes and investigate those mistakes when they happen.
Well, let me ask this question concerning jumpouts. Are you familiar with that term?
Yes.
Okay, within the drug unit. Can you explain that concept, the jumpouts, and if there's any written policy on how that should be done?
That's an internal policy, but we, Commissioner, those don't happen as often as they used to. I think you're, the history of those were back in the days, the Duke Boys and, yeah, officers in unmarked cars would jump out of their cars in high crime or high drug areas and make many arrests from people who threw guns down and threw drugs down to the ground. But that doesn't happen as often as you think. And many times, these days, we all know that the tactics have changed. So years ago, people used to carry the drugs and the guns on their person. Now everything's in the car. So what you see more now is more traffic enforcement in some of those more challenging areas. So you don't see those jumpouts, as you call them, as prevalent as has been in the past.
Yeah, because that's what I'm actually hearing from some of the people in the community. They talk about how the police come into their neighborhoods, the jumpout takes place, the persons are put on the ground, they're sitting on the ground, they're handcuffed on the ground. And it's like the officers are there surrounding that individual and more to do. They're waiting on the drug dog to come and sniff the car and that kind of thing, even when people are saying that they don't want the police to search their car when they ask if the car could be searched. All of those kinds of things are taking in place during the time of these, these particular stops and that kind of thing. So that's, again, why I think it's so important that we do have an evening town hall meeting so we can hear from the public.
Well, and I will say this, and it didn't come up in the, in the presentation, but the Orlando Police Department has a model racial profiling policy. So anytime that someone believes that they were stopped or pulled over because of their race or sex or origin, a supervisor must respond to the scene, a supervisor must investigate every single case of racial profiling. And again, that investigation goes from the sergeant to the lieutenant, to the captain, to the deputy chief, to Internal Affairs, and then I see every single racial profiling complaint. And you would've thought that everything that happened this past year around the nation, that our racial profiling complaints would be up, but they were down significantly this past year. I think they were down by something like sixty percent. So, you know, alls I can say to that is if people think they're being racially profiled or treated unfairly, that there is a system, a mechanism in place for that. And we don't put up with it. You know, about two years ago, we had an officer send some disparaging remarks via text message, we terminated that officer. So, you know, if there is an issue, I need to know about it before I can fix it. And there is a system in place to investigate racial profiling.
And how often does the OPD conduct human relations sensitivity training?
We're required to by the state statute or by the state mandate every two years. So some kind of human diversity training, ethics training every, every two years.
Okay, do you go beyond what the law is requiring? Because, you know, we know that there is some mistrust out there in the, in the community concerning the police department.
Well, that's why we're doing that, that fair and impartial police training. In addition, that's something that we don't have to do. We're doing that again this year.
Do you know how many, because I know it's kind of difficult, but do you know how many use-of-force incidents by officers that go unreported?
I wouldn't know that answer.
Okay, have you heard anything of any aftermath or anything like that?
If we do have an incident, many times a citizen, no, very few times, citizens will come in and report to Internal Affairs that they're arrested and either injured or something happened. And we fully investigate any allegation where an officer used force, especially if the officer used force and didn't properly report it to his supervisor. All those cases are investigated.
Okay. Under the stress-related incidents that you may have or that you recognize that an officer may be going through, but is there, is the supervisor or the manager trained to really deal with these psychological types of situations that the officer may be facing?
Well, there's no specific training for that, but they are trained to ask those questions. They do go through middle management training and supervisor training where those things come up. And by no means are we experts in psychology or psychiatry, but just a simple conversation or, "Hey, Officer Smith, are you working too much? Are you having marital problems?" And, you know, the officer will be many times very truthful with the supervisors. And then that's when we do the mandatory referral to the employee assistance program. And, you know, we do that throughout the year. All that stuff's confidential. Sometimes we do mandatory referrals, sometimes we do voluntary referrals, and the officers volunteer to go seek counseling for a variety of reasons that, you know, us as human beings, you know, we have issues, we have problems from time to time, whether it's lack of sleep, working too much, like I said, financial problems, marital problems, life happens.
Okay, so there is no psychologist on duty that they could be referred to right from the job, that they would have to go out to seek care?
There's a number that we can call. If we need a psychologist or a counselor immediately, there's a number through our employee assistance program that they can call and get immediate assistance.
Okay. The balling, the balling with the basketball thing, does that replace the midnight basketball or is the midnight basketball program still ongoing?
That's basically in place, the midnight basketball. So what happens, every two weeks, there's a safe place for the youth there in Paramore to go play basketball. And sometimes our officers are going to be playing with them. But every time they're there, every two weeks, our officers will be there to have that interaction with them and provide a safe environment to have those conversations.
It's the same program, just a different name?
Yeah, absolutely.
My next question concerns the... My, my next question concerns the, the community itself, specifically Washington Shores. Because, you know, ever since, and this goes to Byron and the mayor as well, but ever since I've been elected here as a commissioner, city commissioner for District Six, you know, I've been advocating for a police substation in Washington Shores. And we know Washington Shores is one of the hearts of the black community. And we have a new fire station there on Goldwin. And there was anticipation of building a new police substation on Goldwin, but never took place. And I've always said that to have a new fire station in the black community, as well as a new police substation in the black community, when we talk about economic development issues, this is one way of enticing investors to invest in the black community and build projects and that kind of thing. We've had our Washington Shores Vision Plan, which is also mentioned in your slide presentation today as presented by Byron. But at, at the same time, there seems to be no plan or plans to try to reach this particular goal. And so when you talk about community trust, and for all of these years, still no movement, no opportunity, that kind of brings a real serious question to me as relates with, you know, how do we care for the entire city, you know, as it relates with community trust?
Sure, actually, so we did do one better, Commissioner. We now have the new Orlando Police Headquarters coming, moving further west, just
As District Five.
Just a few blocks away. Fortunately, policing knows that necessarily confined by districts. By rather, we certainly have an area, service area, that gets, will get tremendous service from out of headquarters coming further west as well. Still have the NPUs over, I think right across the street, there's a NPU at, well, was it Lake Man or Merchant, grew up right, yeah, Lake Man, so I grew up right down the street there as well. And so certainly, the conversation we've had those years was really more about what are the policing practices, or the approach, the strategy. And the good news is there's a very robust method of serving all that area as well. And, and again, since that time we started this conversation, the presence of the police headquarters further west actually provides an even more, they can noticeable and meaningful impact in that community.
Not nearly enough. Because the people, the people see differently. And, and this is the response that I need you guys to really understand. All of that sounds great, but in actuality, the way the rubber meets the road, it's missing from the community. And, and it sends a message to me that, that you're really not that concerned because you're doing things on the outer perimeter for that particular area rather than dealing with that area. And, and even when we look at the NPU, the Neighborhood Patrol Unit, and of course, you know, when, we used to have the Neighborhood Patrol Unit, we had one black officer, one white officer, kind of like you guys, paired together, that worked in the Lake Man, Murchison Terrace, Washington Shores Village, Ivy Lane Apartments, Lake Man Gardens, also Citrus Square on the east side. So NPU was both east and west, and it was paired. And a lot of trust from the community was seen out of those groups of officers. And now we don't have officers paired up that way. And that's one reason why I asked the question about the culture of the organization. You know, what's that underlying thing that's happening in there that we may not be aware of from a public perspective? And that's where we really need to start building, and that's where we can really make a difference. And the, the other thing, too, is like, you know, some of the folks in Richmond Heights as it relates with Willie Mays Park, they don't want to go into Willie Mays Park anymore because they feel that the drug dealers have taken over and that kind of thing. As a matter of fact, I was out with, in a church event at Willie Mays Park, a little basketball program and this kind of thing. Lots of people there, and then all of a sudden, you can smell the marijuana in the air. And, and you know, and to be that brazen and that kind of thing is very serious. And the, and the other people that are trying to enjoy the amenities of what we have to offer, they're not there to enjoy it because, you know, they feel that they could get shot, you know, just by a stray bullet. And then even at the evening hours, they hear the gunfire and the gunshots. Yes, the police are responding, but, you know, to, to know a bail. And so the people, as I'm talking to them at the homeowners' meeting, they're, they are not really that satisfied. And that's why, again, I advocate for a town hall meeting right here in City Hall with the mayor and all of the commissioners so that the entire community can come and be a part of this, and also hear your, your presentation. And I think that's, that's very important. And then another thing, too, we just had a killing on the Richmond Heights bicycle trail that happened, I believe it was last year. But at the same time, the seniors don't want to use that bike trail because the drug dealers and, and the other wayward kids or individuals are sitting on the benches and they're smoking and, and, and this is the drugs, the marijuana and all of that kind of thing, the loud noise at night right up under their bedroom window. And, yeah, they've made contact with the police and that kind of thing. As a matter of fact, they were so involved in the community that they witnessed a burglary and called police, and the police were able to capture these guys that burglarized the residents. But at the same time, they don't feel that there's enough police presence on that bicycle trail. And I do try to encourage them to make calls to your office, Chief, and to speak with even watch commanders that are on duty, because I understand their responsibilities as well. Because when the public calls, it's good for the police department to react in a positive way, to make sure that they have that type of contact and feedback. So with that, I, I would just say, even with our NPU unit, if we can look at it again, because, and, and I'm not advocating for summer programs that the NPU have done in the past because they did work. They were really there to help the, the community and the people. I remember Bradley and Morris, this, now that's back in the day because they patrol Murchison Terrace. And they had people that made contact with them. Charles Robinson and Allison Scowles, they, they patrol Carver Court. You know, they had, those were people that had relationships. Paul Rooney and, and Freddie Dyer, they had the Washington Shores Village, and people responded to them, so. And people knew their name. As a matter of fact, with Officer Scowles, they, they enjoyed her so much, they called her Lady Blue because of the relationships that they had, the positive relationships. So this is where we really need to get more engaged in our communities to build that community trust. So thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz.
I don't know if there's anything left. Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks a lot. You know, I'm a big fan of yours, and I think you're doing a tremendous job. In talking about the way we process some of these issues going on with the police department, I think it's important for us to let know the community about the Criminal Justice Standards and Training Commission that oversees the whole state and how that works. You can just tell us a little bit, because I think the media and the public would like to know also that we also have a body of constituents, some people are appointed, some of them appointed. I believe it's a total of 19 of them. Am I correct? Some of them are chief of police, and there's different people from different sectors that do oversee the operations of law enforcement in general, corrections, law enforcement. And they do, after, in, in the case of an investigation, they also see the outcome, oversee the outcome and do render opinions. So will you just talk to us a little bit about that?
Yeah, the Criminal Justice Training and Standards Commission basically looks at, is in charge of all the training and certifications for law enforcement officers for the state of Florida. So anytime that we have a, a serious offense at the Orlando Police Department, an officer breaks the law, an officer is, you know, written up or investigated for any type of ethical violation, those investigations and our findings, along with our discipline recommendations, are sent to the Standards and Training Commission. And I will tell you that many times, they don't get involved in our cases because our discipline is very severe. So they have never come back to us in recent times and said, you know, wait a minute, you didn't do this, you need to, we're going to pull that person's certification. So we do have circumstances where we terminate officers. So even when the officer is terminated and no longer works for the Orlando Police Department, we must send that information to Criminal Justice Standards and Training Commission, and they can pull their certification. So officers who were terminated for certain things, or anytime, that, that information, that file goes to that commission, and they can, they can suspend the officer's certification, or they can totally revoke their certification. So in other words, if they get terminated from the Orlando Police Department, they won't be able to apply at another police department because their certification will be revoked.
Thank you, Chief. Another aspect that I also like to bring to the media is the fact that we have a great, great body of trainers at Valencia College, which is where we send our officers to be trained. And Valencia College has been numerous, numerous times recognized because of the job they do. As a matter of fact, and I can attest to that, we're working with Puerto Rico. Valencia College is actually helping Puerto Rico with the criminal justice system over there, one of the universities. And they're using some of our trainers over here to, to teach over there, and they help them with some of the issues they have. So that's the level of professionalism that we have in our region. So I just want to, and I know, there's, there's chances, like in any profession, like in any job, there's people that do not abide by the rules. But I believe that the standards we have as a law enforcement agency are of the utmost professionalism, and what you guys have done is tremendous. I like the engagement we have with our community, especially with the scrutiny that we have, we had had lately in lieu of what's going on around the nation. The engagement that you have with our, our officers have with our community, our citizens' police academy, which I, I want to invite, I want to take this opportunity to invite most people, our citizens, to take advantage of this, even our commissioners, because there's so much to be learned. And, and there's X amount of police officers for the whole city of Orlando. So we also have to do our duty as citizens and engage the police. The police is engaging us tremendously to the, to the extent of their capacities. But we also need to invite and make sure that we also get engaged, engage our police officers and invite them. I like what Commissioner Ings is talking about, a, some sort of symposium where the community can come over. I think that would be better served if we do it in a district, per district, because I don't think everybody will be able to come over here from all the districts and engage our police officers and commissioners in terms of asking a Q and A type of a situation. If we do this in a, in a different fashion, we go to each one of our districts, we could probably hold meetings at different stages. We have also the police academies that they go out through, through the year, right? How many of those we run throughout the year? We do it in English and we do it in Spanish, too.
Citizen police academy, correct?
We do those. So we're engaging our community from different standpoints. The opportunity is there. We also have our police officers, as Commissioner Ings mentioned, engaging in our community centers and doing a one-on-one contact with some of our citizens, especially our youth. We are also engaged with the After School All Stars Program and with the PKZ. So I believe the level of engagement is, is, is there. We also need our community to engage us in terms of helping us, helping them. It's back and forth, as I believe President Kennedy says, not what your government can do for you, it's what you can do for your government. Well, in a different type of, of form, we can do something similar. We also need our community to help us engage, because we only have X amount of police officers. So we need some of these community sectors to let us know that they need either more attention, call the police department. We have a system that works on statistics, too, the, the greater amount of calls we allocate police officers, am I correct? Depending on the incidents that is going on there. So that's another way of getting the attention of the police. So it's, it's, it's a community effort, is how we've been working here, and that's how we need to continue working. Our community, I believe we're pretty open, and I believe we have a tremendous sense of communication. We just need to continue this. I think the city of Orlando has stand out in terms of law enforcement. Of course, like any other city, like any other place in the nation or the world, we have our cases, too. We cannot, we're not perfect. But I believe we are very, when it comes to scrutiny, I think we're pretty tough on ourselves, and the job that you guys have done is tremendous. So thank you, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Byron. That concludes our workshop for today, June 15th, 2015.